And we call it a live after five AM 1260 KLYC, The Cruise. And in the studio with us, we have Casey Kula. Kula.
Brian's a hula.
Kula. I keep calling you Kula. It's Kula. And I get reminded on that every once in a while on the street. We are live in the studio today. The first thing you heard was Bowers Diesel Repair in McMinnville. And we're going to be talking more about what's going on at Bowers Diesel. It's one of the, you know, small businesses, great. And it's the engine, the drives, no pun intended. The Yamhill County Economy.
Oh, my gosh, they're so important.
So we are live now and we can take your phone calls. And we're going to take for a news break here in just a moment. But for the next half hour or so, we'll have Casey Kula.
Yeah, I got it.
Excuse me. No cough button, sorry. Yamhill County's newest commissioner, we'll talk about maybe some of the votes that happened at the county commissioners today.
Sure.
This is not a regular session for the, for a county commissioner to be in here. But we just, we had this.
We should do it though, shouldn't we not?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Okay, good.
We'll talk about it now. We have this appointment scheduled about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay. So there was some, a lot of talk about an inclusive proclamation. We were there with video. We do have to apologize if video coverage was in two parts today because we had a cable malfunction. And so we had to cut it. I had to run down to the studio to get another cable. And so that it is on YouTube and our Facebook page, KLYC Radio on Facebook, our website, klycmedia.com. And that's why it's in two parts today.
And everybody is so grateful for the fact that you film it and record it just.
Oh, yeah. And we're going to be talking about that more in the future, too. We do, do live video of McMinnville City Council, Newburgh City Council, Yamhill County Commission twice a week. And the Parkway Committee, we're going to start getting on.
Oh, great, great. I've never, I confess that I've never been to the Parkway Committee, so I'm going to be watching.
Thursday, it's once a month at seven thirty in the morning at the Dundee Fire Station. I think it's the fourth Thursday. And Stan Premizic and I used to have a race to figure out who could, because he was on the Parkway Committee. He'd get out of there and he'd beat me over here because I'd have to turn my gear down and come flying over here to get it set up in time for the ten AM.
For the ten AM commissioner meeting.
Right. So we are taking your phone calls. If you have any questions, comments for Casey Kula, Yamhill County's newest commissioner, you can call us 503-435-1260, 503-435-1260. It is eight second delay. So grandma's listening, make sure you don't say anything bad. If you do, we hit the big red button and it's not on the radio. But when, when you do call, don't listen to the radio, listen to your phone because your radio is eight seconds behind what we're saying.
Listen to your phone, it sounds so odd.
Listen to your phone, eat your phone home.
Yeah.
Let's take a news break, back in just a moment.
Working toward a deal, national security. I'm Barbara Kusak. House Speaker Nancy Pelosi rejects the idea of providing some big down payment for President Trump's border wall as part of a solution to the partial government shutdown. Correspondent Caitlin Collins reports Trump has made it clear if he does not get his border wall from Congress, he will pursue other options.
He said they've been exploring them. And that comes as CNN has exclusively obtained these documents showing that the White House has prepared a draft for the president to declare a national emergency and bypass Congress essentially to build his border wall if it comes down to it.
With the shutdown in its 34th day, there's growing concern it's compromising national security.
A battle the president says is about national security is taking a toll on it according to a letter signed by five former Homeland Security Chiefs, including John Kelly, who served under President Trump, and Jay Johnson, who served under President Obama.
From a security standpoint, we are letting our guard down.
TSA screeners, FBI agents, Border Patrol agents, among those on the job without pay. In Washington, I'm Karen Kafer.
Massachusetts Senator and presidential hopeful Elizabeth Warren is proposing a new tax plan on the wealthiest Americans. Correspondent MJ Lee explains.
This is a wealth tax on everyone with a net worth of over $50 million. There would be a 2% tax on households with a net worth between $50 million and $1 billion. And then a 3% tax on households with net worths exceeding $1 billion. This, they're calling the billionaire surtax.
Michael Cohen's lawyer, Lanny Davis, says he will comply with the Senate Intelligence Committee subpoena. Davis says they hope to agree upon reasonable terms, ground rules, and a date. Pope Francis urged Latin American leaders to shun corruption and tackle gang violence, drug trafficking, and the killing of women, which he said had become a plague in his native continent. I'm Barbara Kusak.
All money managers might seem the same. But while some give their clients cookie cutter portfolios, Fisher Investments tailors portfolios to your goals and needs. Some only call when they have something to sell. Fisher calls regularly, so you stay informed. And while some advisors are happy to earn commissions whether you do well or not, Fisher Investments fees are structured so we do better when you do better. In other words, we're on your side. Maybe that's why most of our clients come from other money managers. So if you're in or nearing retirement, talk with us and find out why investors are switching to and staying with Fisher Investments. Fisher Investments, clearly better money management. Investments and securities involve the risk of loss. Visit us at fisherinvestments.com to find out what we can do for you.
KLYC Weather. KLYC Weather is brought to you by Mac Pack and Ship. Get the value you deserve and the options you want to mail a package with all the supplies you need right next to Albertson's on Keck Drive, McMinnville. Heading into the evening, it'll be cloudy, let patchy fog overnight with a low thirty-five. There is a fog wind into Friday morning. Otherwise cloudy skies will gradually become mostly sunny, our high fifty-two. For the weekend, we'll have patchy fog through the morning on Saturday, with partly sunny skies, our high fifty-three. Patchy fog Sunday morning, with a partly sunny day with a high fifty-two. From the KLYC Weather Center, this is Rod Tanner.
It's forty-eight degrees right now outdoors.
The broadcaster is caught to the side.
There we go.
I've got the farmer's blow.
KLYC, The Cruise, and glad you're with us today. It is, let's see, what, forty-eight degrees outside, five twenty-three is the time. Let's see, eight second delay catch up to us to get back on the air again. Hey, if you have a question or comment for Casey Kula, the Yamhill County's newest commissioner, you can call the station, 503-435-1260, 503-435-1260. So Casey, you asked a question about, hey, we ought to do this more often and get the county commissioners in here and do that. One of the challenges we ran into was when you have three commissioners in here discussing about business, especially business that may be in litigation or whatever, then you're into having to notice that there's a meeting of the commissioners even though it's on the air. This is a talk show format.
Right.
And so they're somewhat hesitant to do that. So our response to that was, okay, we'll bring you in here one at a time.
Yeah.
And so here we go.
You know, and honestly, I think that it's, those obstacles are not insurmountable. So I think, I think it'd be really fun to have all of us on the air because, you know, there's media present.
And we want to be transparent, right?
Yeah, we want to be transparent. I was like, I was hoping we were going to talk about transparency.
Well, it's, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's almost cliched for people to talk about transparency because it's something that we are always talking about. But it's so important. I mean, I feel like how can people have trust in their elected officials if they don't know what's happening?
Now, one of the things that I think it even Ron Wyden, Senator Ron Wyden, mentioned about you at a meeting that was held talking, he was a town hall meeting for Wyden at Linfield.
That's right.
And he said, well, the county commissioner meetings are going to be very, very exciting because, to be quite honest, you're not your typical commissioner.
No, that's, I feel like that's very accurate, Dave.
And maybe a reason why, do you think that's a big reason why you were elected?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I think people were looking to have a little bit of change. I was thinking, and I say a little bit of change because of the Newburgh Graphic and primary, they endorsed me and they said, if you're looking for a little bit of change at the county commissioner level, then vote for Casey. And I like that, a little bit of change. Like, I'm not really trying to upset the balance of power or destroy institutions, but I am trying to get us to think about the things that maybe we've not thought about in the past.
Now, we do want to bow here to Stan Premizic, who served, you know, we heard a lot of compliments about Stan, about his work ethic, the guy who's like an energizer bunny. The county clerk, Brian Van Bergen, tearfully gave him, were you there when that happened?
I was not there, but.
Okay. He, he tearfully said, this guy is amazing and he's been a very, very hardworking county commissioner. It was an honor to serve with him. I was kind of surprised at how much of a tribute he paid for Stan. Now, Stan is a personal friend of mine. And, you know, we don't always agree on things. You and I don't always agree.
Yeah, I love that we don't always agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But one of the cool things that we, I would like to see, in fact, we can talk about this, we might be talking for a while.
Uh oh. I feel like I should talk while I'm driving home.
Well, we can't quite do that yet.
Okay.
But one of the things that I think is missing in dialogue today, especially on the national level.
Yeah.
Is we sit down and talk about the issues and arrive at some kind of solution without having to shut the government down.
Yeah. Now, I'm so glad you're about that, because I'm starting to feel like we just need to always talk about that.
Right. So maybe you and I don't agree on something, but we can sit in a room and talk about it and arrive at a decision. Meanwhile, Joe and Kathy and Brenda and whatever can stay working and keep feeding their families.
Absolutely.
And we don't break, you know, break the farm while we're trying to fix it.
Yeah.
Or break the country while we're trying to fix it.
Yeah.
So that's just what I think.
Oh, my gosh. See, look, we agree on that. It's, it's really check. Yeah, we've got our check marks.
So we're making progress here, right?
I think so. I mean, I, I get increasingly worried at the, especially about folks who are working at Sheridan FCI. And I want to make sure that we continue at the county level, specifically speaking as a county commissioner, to, to keep dinner in our minds, listen to what they need, do what we can for them.
Two times a week, they have a food truck going out now to protect food. Now, this, this is insane.
It is.
We have a food truck going to feed the guards who are guarding the prisoners at a federal prison.
Yeah.
Is that crazy?
It's so crazy. And I, there's, you know, during the summer, right, there were a lot of protests and factions to raise awareness of the detainees, the immigration detainees.
Sure.
And so I brought up with this group who was kind of leading it. I was like, hey, I think we should also be focusing now on the people who are guarding the detainees because they're also in real need right now. And people just took it up. They, it was very clear that people's hearts in Yamhill County are for each other. I thought that was so great.
So one of the things, I think, if I could just be objective, to stand back and see what I see is, you bring a fresh enthusiasm to county government.
Sure.
You're very unconventional in your meetings. It's like, hey, you're from the dais, you're saying, hi, everybody.
I'm so glad they're there.
But.
I mean, I know you're glad they're there, too.
I know. But it's not the normal conservative, this is how we do it.
Right.
Hey, everybody.
I have to laugh away from the microphone.
Okay. Well, and that's not anything bad about you and I.
Oh, I know. It's an observation.
I think people find that refreshing.
Good, good. I mean, I am honestly, as you, I'm sure you are aware.
You're just being you, right?
I, I am so grateful to see all those people out there in the audience. And because it's so fresh to me to not be in the audience, I know exactly what it's like for them to be there. I know that it's, it's hard for them to get there. They have to take time off work or taking care of their kids. They have to get there. And then they have to figure out how in the heck to fill out the forms and the sign-ins and the cards, and did I write the right thing on the cards? And so I have a lot of gratitude for the people who are there.
And every once in a while, I think in your enthusiasm, you kind of misstep as far as talking to the other commissioners about, oh, by the way, we want to talk to recology about.
Yeah, totally.
And, and Mary was mentioning in one of the meetings recently, that she didn't appreciate being blindsided by you in meetings, saying, oh, by the way, I talked to recology and they'll be here next week.
Yeah.
So you're working on that, right?
Totally.
Okay.
Totally. You know, it's, I like to, I mean, we talk about running and leading the county as being a team effort, but because commissioners can't talk to each other outside of the meetings, it's, it makes it very challenging to get those lines of communication open. Because you can't say, talk to the county administrator and then have the county administrator talk to them, because that would be a public meeting, too.
Yeah. And to the normal person, that sounds insane, but what it's designed to do is make sure that you're part of that discussion.
The normal person.
Right.
Is part of the discussion.
So let's talk about transparency in county government. What do you think? Do you think more needs to be done?
Yes.
And, and how pray tell, is, should, would you like to see that happen?
Whenever somebody wants to find something out, like they want a document, or they think, oh, I wonder about X or Y, usually what they do is they go to the county website, right? That's kind of the standard for most people. Or they go into Facebook and then they don't see anything, so they go into the website.
They see what Jerry had for lunch and dinner and.
Totally. They like something and then they try to find it on the website. But often the information they're looking for, either they can't find it or it's not there. And so one of the things I'd like to do, and I was just so pleased to hear that the council, the General Counsel for the Association of Oregon Counties also thinks this is really important, is I want to see that all documents are on the county's website. Every document that's generated that doesn't have confidential or privileged information in it. And that'll be a measure of transparency. So any report that's generated, any expenses that are made, all of it.
What would be nice is if the, the information that is talked about, like for example today, and the staff might be groaning when I'm about ready to say this, is making sure that all of that stuff is digitized and available so we can actually read the same reports that the commissioners do.
Yeah.
And I think it's all in a big printed folder binder and the commissioners have copies of it and it's hard to get us copies of it. But as, speaking as a member of the public, boy, it'd be kind of cool to be able to read those reports.
Yeah. So there is, there's what they call the agenda packet.
Right.
And the agenda packet is generally available and it generally has everything in it. The problem is that sometimes, like this, today's packet was only, I don't know, a hundred pages, but sometimes they're 700 pages. And they're not, because they're a PDF of all of the emails that have come in about something and the documents and the contracts, it's not searchable. So you can click on something and nothing comes up. Or you can click on the, the search function at the top of the website. We're looking at it right now.
We're looking at the website.
Yeah. And so if you search for proclamation.
How about today's meeting?
Sure.
So we go to commissioners and there is.
I think it's, oh, if you go to the homepage, that's the easiest. We're navigating a website while we talk to you. Scroll down, you'll see meetings.
Okay, go to meetings.
And then you scroll just a little bit and you'll see Board of Commissioners' formal session and then on the right is packets.
So they do have the packets on, okay.
They do.
Great.
And sometimes they're not available very soon. So that's a challenge, 24 hours. So for me, I can't really prepare 20, more than 24 hours in advance.
And there's 48 pages on the document.
This is a short one.
So it is available online.
Yeah, one of them was about 700 pages.
Yeah. And that's a lot of work for somebody to digitize that.
Yeah, it really is.
I understand it's staff time, but one of, I guess.
So that's one, is having everything available in an easy to find format.
Right. But we talked about increasing the transparency of county government. I think sometimes people have, let's call it a misconception, because we're just, we're trying to be fair to everyone.
Yes, that's right.
They want to be able to interface with their county government and have a say and feel and what's going on.
Right. Yeah. And so the easiest thing to do that, besides having everything available online, is for people to be able to come to the commissioner meetings.
So let's talk about that. Meeting location, what's going on?
I am, so I've asked that the Yamhill County Administrator staff start talking with the city of McMinnville staff about using the Kent Taylor Civic Hall for our meetings. And there's a lot of great reasons for doing it, but there's also a lot of great reasons for moving commissioner meetings out of the courthouse, which is almost like just a vestigial thing. We still meet there because the commissioners used to have their offices there. Everything used to be in the courthouse. And what I'm hoping to see is that we have better accessibility. So people who can't walk well, who don't really know where to go, who are, you know, in wheelchairs, that it's a lot easier for them to get in.
And to go into the county courthouse, you have to go through security. And quite frankly, Mary Sterrett, county commissioner, is saying she liked that level of security because of all of the shootings that are going on.
Sure.
And it gives them a little bit more level of safety where at the Kent Taylor Civic Auditorium, there's no metal detector, that kind of thing.
Right.
How do you feel about that? Do you feel safety is important?
Absolutely, I think that safety is important. And I think that Rick Olson, Commissioner Olson, Chair Olson, he reached under the table and he said, well, we all have a little button there here.
Let's, let's, let's not go into there. We don't want, we don't want, there's a way for them to summon.
There's a way for them to summon the police, but.
You know, we're on the radio and everybody.
That's right.
Some of the stuff, we don't really want to talk about on the air because the people that might have other motives.
Yes.
Might find that out.
But I personally am not concerned for my safety. I'm much more concerned for people being able to show up and state their case without feeling like, one, they're some kind of criminal for having to go into the courthouse. Two, that they have to have all their stuff searched. I mean, I have to take my belt off.
Right.
It's a weird thing to have to undress in front of people, especially for folks who they might want to make a comment on the land use action down the street from them. And they're like, I'm just coming to say that I'm concerned about parking. It's, it's, we don't need to make it hard. I think actually what we need to do is we need to make it easy for people.
The other night, we, I mentioned, we recorded the video of the new McMinnville City Council meeting. So before, I know, folks, I know we're on the air. This sounds like it's a private conversation that's being broadcast, but we know we're on the air. So I talked.
Every conversation I have these days feels like a public conversation, so.
I talked to Jeff, I talked to Jeff Chow, the city manager. Now, I know I'm jumping the gun here a little bit.
Oh, no.
But I asked, you know, obviously the county is going to ask this, but I said, hey, Jeff, the county comes over here and makes, has a meeting. They, they're looking at having a meeting here. Is that going to fit your schedule? And he said, he told me, this is a reporter asking a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the space is available. It is no cost to the county. And they would train that county staff member on how to run the PA system and all that stuff.
Right.
But that they, initial indication, as he said, we, you know, I'm not saying that they said, yeah, come on over. But I am saying that initially, yeah, it's, the city policy is that other government entities can use that facility at no charge.
Right.
Such as the county.
And so that's, and it's great to hear. I mean, I know that because.
You've already heard that.
I, I talked to them before. I talked to them before I brought it up.
So did I.
Yeah. But the, the converse side of us moving out, the benefits, there are benefits of us moving into the Kent Taylor Civic Hall, but there's also benefits of us moving out of the courthouse.
Which are?
That the Oregon Judicial Department and the DA's office want more space in the courthouse and they don't have anywhere else to go. They can't move out of the courthouse. And Room 32, which is where we do our county commissioner meetings, could be used as, I think that would be a fifth courtroom. Or it could be used, there's room behind for judicial, for judges' chambers, I think is what they call them. So you have to have an office behind. And we're getting to the point in our county where the workload is big enough that a fifth, fifth judge is, that, you know, there's conversations, I've heard.
What about the discussion or the concern that if a county staff member has to get documents to be a part of the county commissioner meeting, right now they just run across the street, but if it's over the Kent Taylor Civic Auditorium, they have to run three blocks?
Yeah.
Three, three and a half blocks away. So it's farther and it's harder to get information like that.
It is. The distance is certainly greater. I would doubt that the time is much greater, however, to do that.
So do you have anything, where are we as far as changing the meeting location? Right now, it's still in Room 32, but they're looking, the county is looking at this other place.
Right. Staff are talking to staff, I believe, is where we're at right now. Yeah.
But.
But I'm excited about it. And it's also a really nice space.
It doesn't seem to be any roadblocks as far as the city's concerned.
Right. Yeah. So the, in the summer, we'll need to figure out the farmer's market.
Parking.
Parking, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I walk to the places that I go. So for, for me, I won't be taking up a parking spot. Yeah.
So you farm when you're not being a county commissioner? We were talking before you went on the air that you worked, you get up at four thirty in the morning and do a little bit of farming, but.
Oh, I do my, my commissioner work at four thirty. So don't turn on your notifications so that you can hear them, because I'll get sent an email and it'll wake you up. Sorry to interrupt you.
So when do you farm? County commissioner job takes you from, you know, five in the morning till nine o'clock at night?
Yeah, it can, that's for sure. Well, that's, the classic thing is the weekend farmer, the person who has a job in town on the day, during the weekdays and farms on the weekend.
You have a full farm.
We do.
You don't have a garden, you have a farm.
Yeah, we have a farm. Yeah. I mean, we, we are decreasing both the scale of the farm, of the farm production and the scale, the size of the season. So typically, we've harvested and delivered produce for 45 to 52 weeks a year. And this year, we're starting in the middle of April. And it's a small scale and our kids are old enough that Katie, my wife, is going to be able to do some of the farm work and she's hiring some of her friends to help, so.
Well, let's talk about today's meeting, Yamhill County Commission. You can see it online, two, two sections, but all of it's there. You proposed an inclusive proclamation.
Right.
Why?
During the campaign, many people from across the political spectrum, so that they didn't feel heard or safe in the county. And I think we actually talked about that the last time I was in here, was the feeling that, that when people would come to me and express their feelings of feeling unsafe, not feeling heard, feeling like they were in danger because of who they were. And that's not, some specifically were transgendered folks in the community, either legal immigrants or people who were recently arrived, but also people in rural areas. People in rural areas have expressed to me feeling left behind by the decisions that are made and by the, the actions that are taken and the development in the more urban areas. And so I wanted to step up and make, because I know that words matter and symbols matter, I wanted to step up and do a proclamation that says, this actually matters, you all matter to us and you're welcome here.
Here's a hardball question.
All right, I'm excited.
One of the things that Mary Sterrett wanted in the proclamation was protecting the unborn.
Yeah.
There was a specific contingent in the crowd today that wanted that removed.
Right.
What would you say to people in the county that are fighting for the rights of the unborn?
Yeah.
And have a problem with that?
It's not a very hardball question.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So what I would say is that.
We're getting into the issue of abortion.
Yes, so I, and this, the reason why I say it's not a hardball question is that it was my understanding that Commissioner Sterrett put it in there because she didn't want the proclamation to pass. And she didn't want me, she she thought that I wouldn't be okay with it being in there. And so she wanted it. And that's just like a straight up, didn't want it to pass. And I, and I, I'm okay with saying that because I'm pretty sure that's what was the case.
Well, let's just talk about the issue itself.
Yeah, sure.
Protecting the rights of the unborn. So that was pulled out of the proclamation. That's two to one. Commissioner Olson, yourself.
Yeah.
Voting for it without that provision. And Commissioner Sterrett voting, you know, against the proclamation because that was pulled out.
Yeah.
So what would you say to the folks in Yamhill County that that's really a hot button for them?
Yeah.
That they want to protect the rights of the unborn? And the county commission today said, we're going to pull that out of the proclamation and they're offended by that. What would you say to them?
I'm, I'm okay with them being offended by that.
Okay.
Yeah, but this wasn't about, this proclamation wasn't about protecting the rights of the unborn. And we can have the conversation about declaring that we're a community that wants to protect the rights of the unborn, but the proclamation was not about that. It was about telling people in the county who can hear us and who feel fear that they are welcome here, including people who want to protect the rights of the unborn. But to me, I, and I, I thought about it a lot in between, you know, you only have a little bit of time, Tuesday to Thursday, right? And I was like, what is the purpose of this proclamation? And the purpose of it, it wasn't to make a political statement either way, pro-choice, pro-life, anything. The purpose of it was for people in Yamhill County who don't feel safe. And feelings are real, so I want to make it clear. When people feel something, that's real for them. I wanted them to know that they were safe. But I, as I told Commissioner Sterrett today, I want to have a conversation about a proclamation that says that we respect the rights of the unborn. And I actually want to go, I want to include in that more things that I, that weren't appropriate for a proclamation about how all are welcome in our county.
Do you have some goals as a county commissioner that you came into office saying, you know, I'd like to see X, Y, and Z, 1, 2, and 3. I'd like to see, I'd like to have a hand in in doing this or seeing this further. Do you have, I don't want to call it an agenda, but do you have some goals?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have, I have values and those values drive my goals.
What are those?
And a big one is the, I think of it as the triumvirate or maybe the three legs of the stool, which is transparency, accountability, and responsiveness. And I, and part of that came out of realizing that people in the county didn't feel like the county commissioners or the county was listening to them or cared about what they thought. And that goes back, that's part of the proclamation inclusivity is saying like, we, we do care about you and we do care and we're ready to listen. And I'm, I'm perfectly happy to have people who really vehemently disagree with me tell me that, because I do actually want to hear from them, even if they're mad at me, which I'm excited about. But for me, another big piece is that our county is, and some people disagree with this and I'm perfectly happy to listen to them when they tell me that. But our county is experiencing climate change. And I want us to be ready. I don't want us to be in a continual state of responding to disaster after disaster. I don't want us to have poor quality water. I don't want us to be unprepared for a wildfire. And so if I can get our county to be more resilient and for rural residents. So the, the reality of it is that climate change affects rural residents disproportionately because we're the ones who are out in the environments that are affected by extreme weather events. And so those folks are the ones who are going to be affected. And so I want to make sure that all those folks are as safe and as resilient as possible. The great thing is that then we'll be ready for a magnitude nine earthquake.
Oh, joy, that'll be fun.
Oh, joy. And we're going to rely upon Dave Adams a lot more.
Okay.
I know, right?
Yeah, sure.
That's what Commissioner Sterrett and I were talking about. We're like, in a big one, we need you.
We'll be here. Let's talk about homelessness.
Okay.
In YCAP.
Yeah.
In fact, county commissioner.
Or just half block down from here, too.
Mentioned at the end of the meeting today that there are people, the insinuation was that it's getting hard for YCAP to conduct business because the path to them is being blocked. Not literally, well, yeah, literally, but not on purpose, I don't think.
Yeah.
But simply because there are so many people camped out on their doorstep.
Yeah.
It's creating an atmosphere where there's a lot of debris on the road. We talked to a lot of people in the community that are, who may have a heart for the homeless and their challenges that they're facing. And I've talked to some business people that some of the homeless people come onto their property and curse at them and they're not happy about it.
Yeah.
And so in the area, over in the Yamhill Carlton area, in Hendricks Road.
Yeah.
There's a problem that they've got some fires there.
Yeah, I was going to, I wondered whether we should have a public hearing about, or public meeting about it specifically, but go ahead.
So what needs to happen as far as the county? Can the county do something about this? I understand we have the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruling saying that unless you have a place for the people to go, you can't.
You can't ban them, yeah. You can't say that this is illegal for you to be here unless you provide them a place.
But some members of the public are saying, if I did this in my backyard, I would have the city ordinance officers to come and override me a ticket.
Right.
And I'd have to deal with it.
No.
And they feel like there's a double standard.
Right, yeah, I totally appreciate that. I mean, right now, I'm working with a group of people and we're kind of looking at all the options. But Heather Hunter at Champion Team, she is developing, has developed a car camping, vehicular camping program modeled after Lane Counties, which Lane County has been doing with the Union Gospel Mission. I think it's, maybe it's United Way. They've been working, they've had a 25-year record of having, yeah, a vehicular camping. She's all ready to go. She's got all the legal stuff taken care of. She has funding. I believe the county is even providing some funding through HHS, which would take folks who are in problematic positions and put them in a parking lot where everybody knows where they are, who needs to know. And they have the, let's see, there's one of the septic, the toilet companies in town is providing porta potties. And I think Waste Management or Recology is providing garbage service.
All right.
And I feel like, but for her, she can't find anybody who was willing to host. That is, and.
We can just speak frankly here, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have to because that's the only other way. There's the only one option, and that's also speaking frankly.
Let's talk of the truth, okay? Just our perception what the truth is.
Totally.
One of the things that the communities, city of McMinnville, Yamhill County are trying to do, okay, let's find a place for these people to go so they're not in the right of way and impeding traffic.
Exactly.
So they go to the community and say, will you volunteer your space so these people can, I hate to say these people.
I know.
People without an address.
Yes.
Can go, can go and have a place to be, a place to be.
A place to be.
So, and if you're a homeless person and you're getting very angry at Dave Adams right now, listen to what I'm saying, because I'm trying to help you here. When these, when the normal citizens, I slipped.
It's hard.
Hold it, hold it.
Yeah.
When, when a resident of McMinnville or whatever, who has a home and property that you can stay on, drives by an RV or whatever, and there is debris everywhere, what they're telling me is this, I don't want my backyard to look like that.
Right.
And I know that's one of the conditions under the Champion Team monitored program where that would be monitored. But I think that's a big reason why you're not seeing people step up.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I think that, yeah.
So I guess my message to those folks living on, right in front of YCAP and other places is if you want people to step up and give you a place so that we can get this log jam broken and find you a place to be.
Yeah.
When it, when there's a lot of debris around your RV and camper, people don't like their property to look like that. So you're, you would help your cause a lot if you were cleaning up.
Well, I really appreciate how carefully you speak, Dave. I think I really appreciate it. Because I can tell you're being, you're trying to be really respectful, but still state what you see as the truth.
The what I'm being told.
Yeah, yeah, what you see, what you hear. So I, I felt like you were being very respectful then, just thank you, yeah.
So let's do something about it.
Yeah, and so Heather Hunter told me a story that in Lane County, they had a very similar problem. Nobody wanted to step up. I mean, like, why are we going to, why would we do that?
Not in my backyard.
Yeah, literally not in my backyard.
Right.
Like, I wouldn't, you would, they're not wanting to invite folks into their backyard.
No, because they don't want their backyard to look like that.
So what, what finally worked in Lane County, according to Heather, is that they, a, like a junkyard, a scrap yard was having repeated break-ins every night. People were stealing stuff, breaking in, breaking locks. And so finally, the owner of the scrap yard said, all right, I want three people, three vehicles at my place as caretakers, overnight caretakers.
Sure.
And instantly, the thefts, the break-ins stopped. And she said that from that moment, it was like, oh, we can see the benefits to ourselves of that because we do need to have something that's in it for us, I think, especially to reach out like that. So she's kind of waiting for, I think, waiting for the.
And what I'm hearing from people in the community, residents, business people.
Yeah.
That have talked to me, and this is not saying everybody feels this way.
Totally.
But that they're getting tired, I know, keeping you past your bedtime, but they're, they're wanting to see something happen in this area.
Yep.
Now, because it's been going on for a year.
Yeah, it's, I totally agree. I understand. And we're, I mean, I'm working on it with, with Heather, working on it with HHS. And we're looking for sites where we can start as essentially as demonstration projects so that people can gain confidence and gain trust, because a lot of trust has been broken. And I, I think that's, it takes a while to rebuild it.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one and it would be nice for everybody if we could kind of come to the table. We talked about that again.
Yeah.
Let's all come to the table and come to some kind of solution that helps everybody.
Yeah.
I think if they did that at the federal government and if we did that with the homeless situation, then maybe we could all sleep a little bit better at night.
Yeah.
Make some friends, wouldn't that be a good idea?
Mm-hmm. An open heart and an open mind, that's what I always think of that. Like, you have to have an open mind and an open heart in order to get things done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So thinking of the other person not as the bad guy, but okay, how can we come to middle ground here?
Yeah.
How can we work together to, to help everyone and to find an answer that benefits everyone?
Yep.
Instead of it, me against you. Well, you're the bad guy, I'm the good guy, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna win my argument.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I'm. I could get in trouble here.
I know, it's true.
I'm gonna close the government.
You are going to get in trouble.
I know, I just did.
Yeah.
But I own the radio station, so it's okay.
That's it.
You have to go.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
One last question. Anything else you want to talk about? We need to get you back in here, but we're also going to, we're also going to get the other commissioners in here, Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Sterrett.
Great.
To talk about how they feel about it. We won't have them in at the same time because of the notice and public meeting and that kind of thing.
That's right.
All right, last, last call. What else do you want to see happen in the county government?
Oh, my goodness, so many things.
Or the county.
Yeah, and the county. I want to see more things where the cities in the county are working together with the county, the big problems that we have. See, the ones that I'm working on would be the structure of county government and how it relates to the cities, the homeless and houseless situation, climate change.